Did you tell Marge we want to talk to her after our meeting?
I did not.
Should you? Where's Mr. Hardaway?
I got a couple of years.
Do you?
Couple crazy.
Good evening, everybody. We'll call to order the meeting of the Maryville Town Council for today, Tuesday, September 27th at 6:30 PM. Please stand for invocation and remain standing for a moment of silence. Mr. Reardon, do we have somebody for invocation tonight? Mr. Minchuck.
Heavenly Father, we reverently invoke thy blessing. May all our actions be guided by thy hand as we may be fair and just to all and for the betterment of this town. We ask that in thine name. Amen.
Amen.
Moment of silence, please. Do we have any veterans in the audience tonight? Would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk Treasor, would you take the roll call, please?
Certainly. Councilman Span.
Present.
Councilman Hardaway.
Here.
Councilman Minchuck.
Here.
Councilwoman Usalak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
President Bella.
Here.
All seven present.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. Tonight, we have a police K-9 program donation presentation. I'll call on the Maryville Police Commissioners to come forward and give them the floor. And please use the microphone. Here's a handheld if you need it, guys.
There's a handheld.
I'm sorry.
He's got a big mouth. He don't need a mic.
Just on behalf of the town of Maryville, as Police Commissioners, Mark Gregeline has been extremely supportive with the local K-9 units. Mark's chief of the U.S. Marshals, been a huge dog supporter. So, on at least behalf of the Police Commissioners in the town of Maryville, this donation means a lot to the K-9 unit.
Pete, could you introduce yourself, please, and the other Commissioners there?
I apologize. Peter Goevich, one of the Police Commissioners. This is Gene Ward, chief. And who else? I'm sorry.
Whoever else.
Caught me off guard. Officer Henry. Go ahead, Mark, and chief.
Thank you, Pete.
Yep, you're welcome.
Good evening, Council. As you said, my name's Mark Gregeline. Some of you may know me, some of you may not know me. I grew up here in Maryville. I'm a graduate of Maryville High School. And growing up as a kid here in Maryville, I had a great respect and reverence for the Maryville Police. And I decided I had coaches that were of mine growing up that were Maryville Police Officers. And so, I decided that I was going to have a career in law enforcement. And I started in 1992 with the Gary, Indiana Police Department. This month, it was 30 years for me as a law enforcement officer. Started with Gary PD, spent three years there, and then I was fortunate enough to come to my hometown of Maryville. And I spent 10 years here on the Maryville Police Department as a patrolman, detective, corporal, patrol supervisor. And then when I left here in 2005, I was the operations commander. And so, I was blessed. As a young man, I also had a vision of becoming a federal law enforcement officer. In 2005, I became a deputy United States Marshal. And over the last 17 and 1/2 years, I've kind of worked my way up through the ranks, and now I'm a chief. I was just promoted this past week to chief.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. So, I'll be overseeing all the officer safety training program for the United States Marshal Service out of Chicago. So, anyway, with all that being said, 30 years, and I'm sorry, I didn't introduce my wife. Philia is here, too. So, we had a conversation, and we decided that we wanted to do a little bit to give back. So, last month, we made a donation to the Gary Police Department K-9 Fund. We also made a donation to Blue Warrior Tactics. They help support law enforcement canines. And I also wanted to give back to my former department that gave me an opportunity, the Maryville Police Department. So, with that being said, Chief Nussus has the real check, but we had this made up, and it's a check to the Maryville Police Department, to the Maryville Police K-9 Fund, in the amount of $500 from my wife and I.
Oh, that's great.
To the town of Maryville.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. President, I'd like to take a few photographs.
Chief, real quick, I just want to say something. Mark, I want to say thank you very much for your generous donation. Our K-9 program was revitalized within the last two years that we've been back in the office. It's always been something that we've always needed. It's always been a passion of mine. And I want you to know that without people like you, we would not have an active K-9 program. Everything that we have gotten, Mr. Doza here with Corporal Henry, has been solely on donations. So, thank you very much for this.
He wanted this there.
Mr. President, thank you guys very much. I wasn't prepared to speak, so I apologize.
No, no worries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable register voucher approval for September 27th. And then, I believe, we received the meeting minutes late, so I wasn't going to include those in the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Pettit. Second, Mrs. Usalak for approval. Questions or comments? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to standing and special committees, budget and finance, Mr. Hardaway.
No reports tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Public utilities, public works and utilities, Mr. Minchuck.
Talks are still going with the employees. We will be furthering more talks next Tuesday.
Elections, public relations, and town beautification, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Yeah, I know he said he didn't have a report, but I would like to add something to the town beautification portion of it. We are doing some work on Broadway. On the 15th of next month, we'll be out there picking up paper as part of what I consider the beautification of this community. I know it takes more than one time to do that, Mr. President, but we got to start somewhere. And this is what I like to do. So, I want to know if there was any people that would like to volunteer. They can contact Mr. Reardon, and he will contact me and help keep Maryville clean. Thank you.
Mr. White, you still have the floor for environmental affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will not be a meeting Thursday because we didn't have a quorum, so it actually pushes it back to, because they're bimonthly. So, there will not be.
Environmental affairs, or is this for Stormwater, or for Solid Waste District?
I was doing Solid Waste District. Marge, go ahead.
Okay.
Well, if you want to talk about the COVID.
Ask what?
Oh, okay.
Yes.
We have had, in Lake County, I believe, one death in the last week. And COVID shots will be available for children of the years of five years and up. That will be coming in very shortly. Lake County had one death, Porter County had two, and La Porte had two or three. And that's all I could recollect on COVID. But it is still out there, Mr. President. So, we have to be very cautious.
Mr. President, I'd like to add to her report, specifically what the President of the United States said that the pandemic was over. So, I don't want people to mistake the pandemic being over, that COVID's over because it's not. So, I just wanted to add that to her, to her report.
Thank you. Personnel policy and employee benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
No report.
Public safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Pretty much the same as before. We will be continuing what we have been doing and hopefully finishing up on Tuesday. I'm kind of dipping into my other committee, but there was a fire territory board meeting last week, reviewed some things they had going on there, budgetary concerns and some equipment concerns. They also gave, or gave out data sheets of all their calls for the last several months, and they're very, very high, just like the Police Department. So, they're all working hard for us as best they can with what they got.
Anything else?
That is all.
Thank you. Economic development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. I'll let Angie report on the extremely, in capital letters, successful event we had today at lunchtime. But later on in the agenda, we have two items that will need Town Council approval. One is a tax abatement approval for the corner of 89th and Mississippi. And then, we hopefully, I think Pat, have a full-time tenant in the Fieldhouse Building, which is long, long overdue. Midwest Aerospace has an economic development agreement in front of us that we need to consider. That'll be later on under resolutions.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Usalak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I messaged Torrance today about the garbage can at Rosenbaum Park. With the wind out there, we have a lot of garbage flying all over. I had two calls on that. So, I don't know if you paid attention or if you got my message.
Did.
And the bike trail is the same. Weather was warm last week. Now, we have a lot of wind. So, the garbage cans, they are spilling over with garbage and the wind blowing it. So, maybe you could check it out tomorrow if at all possible.
Will do.
Okay? Thank you, Torrance. And that's about it.
Thank you, Mrs. Usalak.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Yeah, this is for, actually for Marge, just to add to your report as well. We're having a breast cancer walk at the Prusen Center Park on the 9th of this, of next month.
Okay.
It's very important that we support those survivors and those people, that know individuals that had those things in there, those kind of incidents in there, because I hear it all the time.
Okay, what day is that?
It would be the 9th.
Okay.
Of October, from 11:00 AM to 2:00, to 2:00 PM.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
And Avalon just had a breast cancer fundraiser last week, too.
Okay, nobody notified me on that one, so I didn't, I didn't know about it.
I know, I found out on my own, too.
I get it, like we do most of the time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President. Vicky will have something to discuss during her report.
Thank you. Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. We had a committee meeting before this meeting with Torrance and his staff, along with Trista and Eric from Cendron Associates. And we will have an item on the workshop agenda next Tuesday as it relates to the budget for the Dean and Barbara White Community Center for the rest of this year and next year for 2023. And we will also be reviewing the fee structure for that facility once again. I don't know. Torrance, is there anything else to add?
No, we'll talk later about the event that was held today there at the center. Other than that, no.
Thank you. Special projects committee, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things. First off, we're going to start meeting to discuss the Christmas tree lighting that's coming up in, probably end of November. We're going to set a date for that and figure out what we're going to do. I think you received the email that I did from Lions Club President, asking us what he could do to help us to participate in that. So, we'll figure out when he's available, we'll sit down with him and figure out what we're going to do there. Also, for all, for all directors that are within earshot, October 27th is going to be the Shared Ethics Summit that they, that the Ethics, Shared Ethics Committee puts on every year. It's going to be at the Avalon from 8, I think it's from 8 to 11:30. It's free. And so, I'd like for all department heads, anyway, to sign up for this thing and be in attendance. It's a great time. A lot of great information that comes out of it. And it ties up half your day, but I think it's well worth it. I will get the emails sent out to everybody with the information so that they could just go online and register. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Yeah, in reference to the Lions Club, I think we need to reach out to other nonprofits because I know we did give them some ARP money. And I want to just make sure that there's other people that may be interested. I don't think we should direct it to one organization, specifically because I don't like the ties as well. But, so.
The reason we referenced the Lions Club is because they purchased the trees that have been planted at the community center, which we're going to use to put the lights on for the holiday season. That's the only reason why the Lions Club has been mentioned about the tree lighting ceremony.
Sure. I mean, I think a lot of people celebrate Christmas. So, if you think that some other groups may want to participate, that I would just put that out there. Would that be all right with the council?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Are you going to contact a few nonprofits and get them involved?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Moving on tonight to department and commission reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry I gave my report a little bit early in the wrong category.
Not a problem.
That's what happened when, I don't have my meds and stuff. Yes, the Solid Waste District will not have that meeting on Thursday because it's, we don't have a quorum. And this happens quite often. And I think that when we do a two-month, people get a little lazy. And then, now that they're moved to out here in Maryville, you have people that come from Whiting and those areas. Sometimes I think that that probably skews the attendance there. But we did get an email from Chairman Rick Lone today saying, let's try a little harder to be here because we do have business to take care of, specifically in terms of we're getting ready to start the leaf collection program for the unincorporated areas. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Hardaway.
Ladies, Mr. President, I gave Mr. Reardon some information on possible grants that may be available to us. And he's investigating those. And once he does his due diligence, he'll get back to the council and let us know the status.
We have those in time for the next Tuesday workshop, October 4th?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Anything else?
That's all.
Thank you. Stormwater Management Resources, our director, Matt Lake.
Yeah, thank you. Real quick, dire construction has mobilized for Marcella Road for the drainage project there. They got pipe laid out, so they're going to be starting here very shortly. We finished maintenance for Chapel Manor Ditch over there. It looks great. Howard's Tree Service did the work.
Thank you.
They did a great job. Also, I finalized the new flood hazard area ordinance. This is for us to remain compliant with NFIP standards. And I sent this off to Linda to put on the next council agenda. A few tweaks here and there, but nothing major. So, that should be pretty straightforward. Received a correspondence from IDM. They informed us that our grant proposal has been forwarded to their recycling market development board for funding consideration. What happened was there were so many applicants that applied for that, they whittled it down to 14, and we're one of 14. So, they're going to probably do some, because there's only so much money, I think they got, what it says here, 3 million requests. There's 2 million available. So, they might reduce the size of some of these projects or just scrutinize them a little bit closer. But I'll go before the board and plead our case for that particular grant. And I also sent out an email with regards to a purchase agreement for 97th Grand Boulevard. Want to do a project out there to relocate the ditch. The engineering is all done. All of the permits are basically done. So, we got two parcels to acquire. We got an agreement sent out to one property owner. He signed it. So, he's waiting for us. And then, we got to just wait for the next one. We sent it out. We're still waiting to hear back from them. So, I think that's an important project because really, it's a safety project. It's not really a drainage. It's safety to relocate that ditch farther away from the street so it's safer. So, that's all I had for now.
Thank you, Matt. South Shore Visitors Convention Authority, Mr. Reardon.
Thank you, Mr. President. The organization met as a board last week and conducted normal business. Those of you who frequent the Visitors Center at 8094 and Kennedy might recognize some construction. There is some renovation going on in front of the building and also into the parking lot area. So, that should be underway. Had an opportunity to speak with Dave Iran, our president, and I'll be reaching back out to the council to set up a meeting with the organization to talk about joint opportunities focusing on marketing and also to pick up the discussion on where we're at with the proposed convention center. Lastly, shout out to our Parks and Recreation Department staff and everybody affiliated with, with the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Last Thursday, Torrance, I believe, we hosted the South Shore Convention Visitors Bureau Rose Awards. And it's a fantastic event. Rose Awards are geared toward those in the service industry. And it's really neat to see the recipients, beneficiaries, get called out because half of them don't really realize why they're there. They're asked to be there. And then, the one who wins is, you know, is really appreciative. And that was held at 6600 Broadway, the Dean and Barbara White Community Center last week. Thank you.
Fire Territory Board, Mr. Span.
No report.
Department reports. Torrance, Parks Department.
Like just mentioned, a lot of hard work that's gone forward to be able to host last week's Rose Awards. It was a very successful event, really nice to just be out there and honor just good customer service. Also, had the event today that we'll let Angie speak on today that was highly successful. It's always cool when high officials would like to come to our place and just to break bread and talk. And well attended. Thankful to the Maryville Police Department for the extra security, too, that helped us out there today also. Other than that, just trying to really keep up with all the parks that we're managing and looking forward to finishing out 2022 strong and 2023.
Thank you. Assistant Police Chief Costa.
Thank you, Mr. President. As always, we're facing some serious hurdles, but we're looking at different ways to overcome them. Chief and I have been reaching out and speaking to neighboring agencies, and we're possibly going to examine some type of joint venture to have more police presence within town. And we're looking forward to that, and I'm hoping that's going to be successful. But I don't want to jump too far ahead of myself and jinx it before it happens. Other than that, guys and gals are doing an awesome job. And they're proving more and more that they're the best. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Yeah, this is for Deputy Chief Costa. Thank you for all you do, Deputy Chief.
Thank you.
I seen the sheriff on Saturday while I was out and about, and I mentioned some of the things that we had talked about in terms of that assistance that you're looking for. And I really appreciate the quick response he did because I was right, I was coming down Broadway. I seen some very menacing-looking county vehicles out there, looked like they were ready to go to work. And I think that that visibility helps overall. So, I just wanted to let you know, thanks. And then, if you see the sheriff again, thank him for
Will do, thank you.
Showing that he is committed to helping us out here. Thank you.
Vicky, Code Enforcement Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are going to remind everybody about the campers' boats and trailers, that they have to be out of driveways October 31st. This is the last day you can have them there. So, everybody needs to kind of figure out what they're going to do with them. November 1st, we can start writing citations. And the other thing we're having a lot of problems with is people blocking mailboxes. So, please, don't block people's mailboxes. Attorney Sweatingoff, could we write a nuisance ticket on that?
I'm sorry, repeat that again, please.
We're having a lot of trouble with mailboxes being blocked. Could we just write a nuisance ticket on that?
Let me look at it. I'll get back to you tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Vicky, for mentioning that. And I have to thank you every time I call you. And Tiffany, you're right there.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Thank you.
Blocking of the mailboxes, Joe, becomes a problem for whatever reason. All of a sudden, now people want to block other people's mailboxes.
Right.
I've received a few phone calls here within the last couple of weeks of people.
I think we should write an ordinance on that. We don't have an ordinance.
We need to do something because it's not.
Because it's from the north end of town to the south end.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Let me look at the nuisance ordinance tomorrow morning.
It might be covered already.
It might be covered. If not, then we can decide how we're going to approach the blocking.
Thank you.
Good.
I mean, if we just, even if we just amend it, I'm okay with it. But we have to do something because, you know, one street, one of the neighbors had to get the mail from the mail person so that they could, you know, put it in people's mailboxes. Because the mail people, sometime they'll get out of their vehicles and sometime they won't. And so, you know, when they choose not to get out of their vehicle and put the mail in the mailbox, then the people have to wait till the next day or whatever. And one lady said that her bill was late because people had her mailbox blocked for like a whole week. Thank you.
Mr. President, I was wondering, in a sense of mailbox blocking, does the United States Postal Service, how does, do they deal with that? Because that's kind of federal a little bit, isn't it, Mr. Attorney?
It's not federal, Mr. White. You call the post office, they'll tell you that there's nothing that they will do about it.
Only thing they'll do about it is not deliver the mail to that place.
Big part?
I said, the only thing they will do about it or won't do about it is they won't deliver the mail.
Yes, they won't put the mail in the mailbox.
But let's check our current ordinances that Joe mentioned we need to do, okay? Did you have something to add, Costa?
I was just, I was, the last time we had looked, because we've been, we get this call quite a bit.
Yeah.
And last time I looked, as far as the general nuisance, there wasn't anything that really covered on it or touched it. So, that'd be awesome. That would be great.
All right. We'll do what we have to do. Sheila Schein, Parks, I'm sorry, Parks, Planning and Building Department.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to bring a few highlights from our August building permit report. We had a total of 174 building permits. The total cost of fees collected from those was $226,992.87. Cost of improvement was $41,694.512. So, we, out of that was 35, 31 new homes, two duplexes. The Amazon did a charging station upgrade for $4 million. And of course, the Williams Institute was $9,338 of improvement. Aquinas School, $2,015,235. And of course, the Silos at the Farm Building was $18,689.44, $442 for a total cost of improvements. And the building permit alone for the Silos Farms was $91,348.95. So, just a little snippet of what the Building Department is doing along with economic development and our development team. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Sheila. Mr. King, Public Works.
How do I follow that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'll start off with the paving program for this year. We are completed in Ward 6. We're continuing to work, and continue to work in Ward 2. Probably 75% done with that work in Ward 2. There's a couple straggler streets out there that we're going to get before the end of this construction season. There's a couple straggler streets out there that we're going to get before the end of this construction season. One is in Ward 5, 85th Avenue. The other one is in Councilman Span's Ward, Ward 1, 63rd Place. I did speak to Ms. Julia Adamo, resident on 63rd Place. With her concerns, she sent an email to Councilman Bella, which I've got. I've already spoken with her about this. I spoke with her again this morning about this and then she called this afternoon for the same thing. So I've spoken with her several times about her street. The Broadway sidewalk project, the east side, the sidewalks are all in. There's a couple little tweaks we've got to do. Add some decorative rock and stuff, which is going to be done here quickly. We're waiting on some brand new light poles, which we've been waiting about nine months for. Hopefully they'll be in this year. The community crossings project that we have, the Harrison Madison Street project, that's completed. We're working on 83rd Avenue off of Randolph by the water park. They're doing a cement stabilization and also we're widening the road by one foot on each side. It was pretty narrow. So we're widening that. So Public Works, our branch pickup ends this week. This is the last week for it. We have to gear up for our LEFAC program, which starts on the 17th. We're also tub grinding branches we picked up from a storm a month and a half ago. Our tub grinder's been down for a while and it's up and running again. The Rumble Strips, 76th and Madison, I get a lot of calls about the Rumble Strips. Everybody loves them. They want to see more of them in town. They think it slows people down. It sure gets their attention and makes them slow down and stop at stop signs. Spoke with Councilman White, he's got a couple locations on his ward. We'd like to get them installed and to get some people slowed down. So we'll be working on that with Councilman White. Also, last but not least, the new speed limit signs. Residents might see them all over town. They are digital speed limit signs that has the posted speed limit on top and the bottom is a yellow sign that tells you how fast you're actually going. If you go over five miles an hour above that speed limit, they will flash red and white at you. So to get your attention to slow down, I can tell you this, we had, since we put them up, we had a car on Maryville Road last week, because we can check this, at 5:00 AM in the morning doing 82 miles an hour down Maryville Road in a 40 mile zone. Extremely dangerous.
So think about that for a second, 82 miles an hour. There is no legal speed limit that is 82 miles an hour on any road, anywhere in Indiana.
Correct.
So we're going to have to back up our support with the new signs with an actual squad car to monitor and do what they have to do.
Yes.
So Costa, please take a note of that. We need to use the signs in conjunction with additional patrol as best we can.
We can work with you guys because the software that comes with this, it'll give us a printout of peak times a day, peak speed. It's just, it's pretty amazing. And it could maybe help you guys out, Costa, we can, you know, share information.
Yeah, definitely. That peak time, timing has been one of the big problems that we've had. We'll put somebody out there and they won't get anything for, you know, hour that they're there or no less than that. It just depends, but that would be great.
Yeah, we can, we'll work with you on it. Yeah, we can do that. So today we have seven of these signs up in town. We got 14 total, two for each ward. Seven of them are up already. The two are up in Ward 2. We have two.
Where'd you put the second one at? Where'd you put it up?
We got Wen.
Yeah, I saw one. I know you got one on 54th Avenue by the park.
Yeah.
But I wanted the other one over on the west side of Harrison.
On the other side, that one up this week.
You must did that today.
Yeah, they did it today. Yep.
Thank you.
Use your microphone, Rich, too, when you talk. Use your microphone too, please, for the video.
All right, thank you.
Okay, no problem. So yeah, the two up in Ward 2, we got two up in Ward 3. Ward 4, we have one so far. We're waiting on locates for the other location that you requested, Marge.
Yes. Did you put it on Whitcomb Street?
We have the one up on Whitcomb. We're waiting on locates for 78th Avenue. We're waiting on locates. Ward 5, we have one up. We're waiting on locates for Tany Street. We're waiting on locates for that. We have one up in Councilman Pettit's Ward.
93rd Avenue?
We have 93rd Avenue. So we just need one more location. I'll need Councilman Span's locations. We could talk about that, where you'd like these speed limit signs put up. I've talked to Councilman White. We're waiting on locates for his as well. They'll be going up on 61st Avenue.
So explain, just for the audience, Steve, when you say we're waiting on locates, we all know what that means.
Okay.
Explain what that is, please, and why there might be a delay in getting a sign up.
So what we wanted to do originally is we wanted to put these things on already, speed limit signs we already had posted. Half of these locations, we cannot do that. We have to put a new post in the ground. So we have to have utility locates mark everything so we don't pound posts through a gas line or something like that. Utility, their utility locates are running behind just like anything else. They're anywhere from two to three weeks out. So it's taking a process. And then the existing signs that we've put them up on already, you know, we've had a process. We've had to extend our posts, raise those signs up to get the signs at the right height so they will catch your speed. So it's been, it's been a process. There was a webinar involved in the beginning that our people had to watch, hour and a half long before we could even start with these things. So, and they're neither, all cloud based and they're working really well.
That's great.
So.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hardaway.
You know, I know we talked about this before, but I think that since, you know, we're getting positive feedback from this, I'd like to see you put on the agenda for next week's workshop that we order 14 more of these signs. So that each ward will get two more for a total of four each. Because I think that they are going, they're going to be very impactful and, you know, that's, hopefully that's going to help us in the long run, Sean.
Yep.
So if we can just get people to slow down a little bit, because, you know, I got some on the west side, I need to get some on the east side. So two more would help me.
And this would be through ARP funding, I assume?
Yes, yeah, that's ARP funding.
I'll make sure that's on the agenda, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else, Steve?
No, that's all I have for right now. Just, you know, Public Works is busy every day, you know, fielding phone calls. I mean, we've been picking up, you know, branches have been out, cracks sealing roads. Hats off to our people. I mean, they always do a great job and we've got something going on every day, so.
Great, thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
This is for my favorite Steve guy here, because we talked, we talked a little bit earlier today and I just wanted to say thank you. I haven't went past her yet, on 61st and Harrison.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I did see the Midwest Electrical Company out there on 57th and Harrison because the new overhead lights somehow or another, they're failing. Specifically the one on 61st Avenue. My understanding after talking to Midwest Electric was that it was a bad photocell or something of that nature. So he promised me it'd be on tonight. So I say thank you, Steve. Glad that guy, thank you, that's it.
Angie, Economic Development. We sure got a lot of kudos today, didn't we, from the governor and from Congressman Mervan?
So I just wanted to give a quick update. I started my day off with the video production team. We went around the community to several locations, doing, taking footage of the different locations within the town. Today was the first day of filming. They will be back two more times. Very exciting. We ended our day at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center where the Northwest Indiana Forum was having an event. Lots of, it was a very well attended event, I believe. Terrence, I don't know the max capacity of that room, but I'm guessing you had over 400 attendees there. Lots of officials, very highly respected elected officials and special guests, speakers, Governor Holcomb and Congressman Mervan. They did a nice meet and greet with everybody, talked about the region itself and how impactful things are going on within the town of Maryville. Just something as small as a video production can make a world of a difference. They, Governor Holcomb actually gave me a little shout out and, and when I got back to my office, I already had voicemail messages from community people saying, hey, I heard you got a shout out. Let's work, let's get together, let's do lunch. So little things like that, it's going to make a difference. It was a great event and we just look forward to continued success. And I would like to thank Terrence and his staff for all their efforts and hard work. They've been assisting me with that production going on and working as a team with all of our departments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It goes without, Mr. President, goes without saying, as RDC president and a lot of these things are, you know, Mariplex and silos at Sanders Farm, that was highlighted because Heather Anis from Northwest Indiana Forum, they came in to laud the Ready Grant. And the silos at Sanders Farm is one of 34 projects in the region that is receiving Ready Grant funding. We're participating with those gentlemen in that development. Once again, those guys are not messing around. If you haven't been down South Mississippi, the first building is up, all four walls, in probably a week and a half, 258,000 square feet. Again, as Angie alluded to, Governor Holcomb singled her out and the town of Maryville as to what we're doing here on an economic development level. And I cannot thank Angie and Joanna and Pat enough for what they do to promote this town, bringing in development. We're at the top of the list when people are looking for developable land in Lake County, without a doubt. We're head and shoulders above everybody because of our tax rate, because of our staff, because of the incentives that this council gives. That's why people are coming and knocking on Angie and Pat's door. So thank you, guys.
You know, for the longest time, Lake County, Indiana was almost considered part of Illinois and wasn't really recognized by the rest of the state as much. I mean, we're on a different time zone from Indianapolis, et cetera. And I have to say, in the last two years, I've never seen the Indiana governor more than I have in the last two years. And many of those visits have been right here to the town of Maryville. That puts us on the map. That gets us attention downstate. That makes Maryville the center of the county and the heartbeat of the area. And I want to thank everyone too for all the efforts, what we're doing. So we're on the right track, we just have to keep it going. Mr. Reardon, anything else to add under Town Manager Report?
No, sir.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to General Orders, we have first reading ordinances. The first one is Ordinance 22-21. I have it on the agenda, but I want to remind the council that this was laid on the table at our last council meeting. That's up to the council. A motion that's been laid on the table may be taken up again by the adoption of a motion to take from the table.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
I move that we approve the Ordinance 22-21.
That motion's out of order, Mr. White, I'm sorry.
Okay, retract my motion. Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Motion to untable Ordinance 22-21.
Would you clarify your motion to remove from the table Ordinance 22-21 for consideration tonight?
Absolutely.
Is that the proper language, Mr. Svetinov?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure we're doing it correctly.
That's the first time I heard of that language, but not really, but go ahead.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Span to remove from the table Ordinance 22-21. Any discussion on the motion? Here in, roll call, please.
Mr. Span?
Hi.
Mr. Hardaway?
Abstain.
Mr. Minchuck?
Abstain.
Mrs. Usalak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Abstain.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
No. What is it?
Um, let's see, there are one, two, three yes votes, three abstentions, and one no.
Motion fails.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
Abstentions do not count. So how does, if you got three that says yes and one that says no, how does the motion fail?
Well, we need four votes to, we need four votes to approve. Anything we do needs four votes, Mr. White. Moving on tonight to Ordinance 22-22.
May I speak? Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Okay, so the motion that you, that Mr. Minchuck tabled on the last meeting and wanted to discuss at the workshop, we discussed at the workshop. I got an assurance after we discussed it from both Mr. Hardaway and Mr. Bella that this would go forward, that this would not be an issue, that this would not be a problem. In the past, when we have tabled matters, when you put it back on the agenda, no one had to make a motion for it to be untabled. That's why he's saying, he's, first time he's hearing this language. In the past, when you put it back on the agenda, it has been voted on. Now, even after you assured me, Mr. Bella, both in person and over the telephone, and Mr. Hardaway assured me that since this money is within my own budget and I am giving up the money that was designed to increase the clerk treasurer's salary for my employees, that you didn't have a problem with it.
Well, since we talked at the last workshop and discussed this topic, Madam Clerk Treasurer, we've realized that the funding that we think is there really is not there. And so we want to table this, or leave it tabled, I should say, until we meet on October 4th to discuss it again. Any action we take can also be retroactive to whatever date. But according to our financial advisor, we just don't have the funds, as you've indicated, to move forward with this.
So you're telling me the clerk treasurer, the duly elected clerk treasurer, who is the person who's over the finances and makes the determination on the budget, that our advisor that you pay 300 and some dollars an hour and makes 14,000 dollars or something a month, has told you that my budget does not have the money that I'm telling you that it has? That's what you're saying? And that's the reason why you want to table it?
It's not being tabled, it's remaining on the table. It's just being delayed again, Kelly, that's all we're doing.
So that the employees who are here today, and I thank my employees for coming out and supporting me, and I thank you for all the hard work that you do, especially since I had to get four new employees at the drop of a hat and they have come in and they've done excellent work. They have to wait yet again to get this money because Trista disagrees with my accounting that I don't have the money within my budget. Trista, can you step to the mic and please explain? Because I'm confused. Because we've looked at it and Aurelia's gone over it. Aurelia, I'd like for you to come to the mic as well. No, that's how you guys want to do this, let's just do it all in public.
This is not how we want to do anything, Kelly, this is just.
You assured me, Mr. Bella, you gave me your word, and so did Mr. Hardaway, that this was not a problem.
Kelly, we did talk about it, I agree.
Okay.
Go ahead, Trista, please explain.
President Bella, what I explained to you was not that there wasn't money available.
Point of order, point of order, I'm sorry. There is no discussion on the table. Am I correct, Mr. Svetinov? You're correct.
And further clarification, and further clarification, Mr. Svetinov, under Robert's Rules of Order, you do in fact have to make a motion to take a tabled item off, bring it back onto the agenda. Just because it's on the agenda doesn't mean we can automatically vote on it. There had to have been a motion to untable this, am I correct?
Correct, and that was properly done.
And it was properly done.
There was no discussion, was there? According to Robert Rules of Order, once you make a motion and motion is seconded, then there's discussion. Was there a discussion? I'm asking for a discussion. Point of order.
Mr. President.
Let's just have, let's just hear from Trista real quick.
Mr. President, I would like to say, Mr. President, that Robert Rules of Order basically states that when you do abstentions, those are zero votes. So when you talk about that it has to be four votes, I never seen that. I just, I seen the fact that it was the majority of votes, yes votes. So I think you need to look under Robert Rules again, because I think you just threw something off the table that passed. Thank you.
I would totally agree. But go ahead, Trista.
What I was explaining to some members of the council was not that there's not money in the budget left. It was the reason for whether there was money. It was the reason for whether there was money available. It was explained by the clerk treasurer at the workshop that she was delaying or not taking some of her salary. In fact, her salary is set for the year, and she has been receiving her salary. The reason that there is some money in the budget left to make the changes that she's asking for here during the mid-year is because there was a period of time when there was not a full slate of employees in the clerk treasurer's office. And so there was a two-month period at a minimum that there was an open slot, basically, where payroll was not being used for that person. So that amount adds up to the approximate amount that would be used if the raises were granted. So the appropriation balance is there. It's just not for the reason that was explained in the workshop.
So let me respond. Part of the money, a very small portion of the money, came from the money during the time when there was nobody in the office. That's a very small portion of that money. It is not the majority of the money that has been used that I explained to you that I had within my budget. But I can have my bookkeeper to step up and explain. And point of order, I just looked this up last night because I'm the attorney for several boards, and abstentions are a zero vote, and all you need is a majority. So it should have been not tabled. There's only been, it was only one no vote.
Absolutely not. Absolutely, yes.
You don't need, you need a majority, just a majority.
Majority of the seven present.
Of the members present. There's seven. Or the majority.
But abstentions are a no vote. It's not a vote at all.
It means zero.
It means zero.
You can't add up zero. We did that before.
So you got three yes and one no is what you have.
And that passed.
Aurelia, or I believe it passed as well, and I think that should be researched. And I certainly will have my attorney to write up something for you, since
Yeah, that's fine.
we always have to bring in attorneys, even though I am an attorney, and I just told you that. So Aurelia, or Robin, would you like to speak to the money?
I had work done today, so my mouth is like still numb from the work that I had done. Robin? We've worked together trying to get this all together to come up with the right totals.
So outside of the money that was for Kelly, I'm sorry, for the clerk treasurer's raise, there was additional funds left in our 112 account, which pays our secretaries. Those funds will be used to give them a raise in their line item. There's also additional funds from stormwater as well as fire hazmat.
And fire territory. Give additional funds.
Yes. So the funds that were already within our budget would be spread evenly throughout our staff to increase our salary.
I'd like to say, Mr. President, that Trista misspoke because at the last budget meeting, which now I see, I probably need to record you guys and let you know I'm recording you, it was very clear that I was to, my salary was to be increased. I just never had Trista do a new salary ordinance. But it was clear in our budget meetings, it was agreed upon in our budget meetings that there would be additional dollars within my budget from fire territory and from stormwater to increase the clerk treasurer's salary over time. You asked that it be increased over time. It is not in line with the rest of the clerk treasurers and the surrounding communities. We are the largest town. We do more work, and we have been open. I never asked for it to be changed. That's all. I've not been getting paid what I was promised. I've been getting paid what I was getting paid last year. So the money was still there. My employees, however, have had to take on additional work, as I stated before, and as was reported in the New, in the Times, additional work because of the opening of the community center and because of the ARPA funds, which they could have been paid out of, and you've chosen not to pay them out of that as well. So I am not understanding why I am telling you that there's money within my budget, and as you stated in the meeting, Kelly, we've always said, we give you your money and your budget, and you do what you want to do with it. Isn't that what you said, Mr. Bella? You can hire one, two, three, pay them what you want? Was it not clear that by statute I can pay my employees what I feel they deserve as long as the money's within my budget? I could even do a resolution and move money from another line item into that line item. I haven't even had to do that. So the money is within my budget. There's still money left. If that was your concern, and I've just explained to you that the money is there, then why can't this be untabled and my employees be paid what I would have been paid had I changed it?
What do we do January 1st, Kelly? So you don't have the money for next year to handle these increases. So is this just a three-month raise for your employees?
Money...
Because next year, everyone gets a 2% raise except for PD.
And I told you that if you would just approve the money that I have within my own budget for my own increase to give to my employees, that you didn't have to give my employees a 2% raise because they would have already gotten a raise, and the money will still be within my budget. Now, if what you're saying is that you intend to take money away from my budget, if that's what you're saying, if that's why this is going to be a problem, because you intend to try to take money away from my budget, we're going to have a problem because I am the clerk treasurer, and I'm not going to allow it.
Okay. Well, it just remains on the table so we can discuss it further, Kelly. Moving on to ordinance 22-22. It's an ordinance of the appropriations of tax rates for the year ending 2023. This is for our tax rate for next year. Trista, would you mind, or Eric approached the podium? We're going to have an adapted, adopted, excuse me, tax rate of .7460.
May I present?
Go ahead, Trista, yeah.
As councils are aware, and as we have done in multiple years past, the budget that you have before you on the ordinance for today for first reading is published high, both in the amounts that are listed there on the adopted budget column as well as the rate. That is done so that as the council comes to settle in on what the budget should be for next year, you can make cuts where it is decided to make cuts and come back in then toward a balanced budget. At the time then that you vote, those adjustments can be made and that hopefully balanced budget then sent to the DLGF for approval. I'm happy to report that the max levy that the town will receive is 5% higher than last year. You'll recall that the DLGF makes a determination each year on what percentage increase that each town and city will receive. That moves you up into just slightly higher than 7.7 million dollars. As well, the additional taxes that you'll receive from excise and seva and fit should total just over 500,000. So in tax money alone, for the general fund specifically, you should receive higher than 8.2 million. And then, of course, you have additional miscellaneous revenues on top of that that the general fund receives for all of your building permits, all the various licenses and things that you see come through on a monthly basis. So in total, we're predicting revenue upwards of 10 million. And I think that that number is something that you can be comfortable with in making your plan going forward on the general fund specifically. So there will be some work over the next few weeks for the Budget Committee and Council ultimately to settle in on and, like I said, make those cuts that are appropriate. The other funds as well, some are budgeted high on purpose, again, for you to make some adjustments. Local Road and Street and MVH will need some attention. The Parks Non-Reverting Fund will need some attention as well. Again, very typical, that requests are made from the department heads to the council, and then, of course, having to narrow back down to what can be afforded. Today is set for public hearing. And so at the point in time that we're finished with whatever discussion you wish to have, then that should be opened and let the public have a moment to speak. The vote then is set for the next council meeting on October 11th. And again, those adjustments can be made before then. Are there specific questions that anyone is interested in?
Yes, Trista, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Just clearly, just so I can understand, we're talking about ordinance 22-22? Okay. When we say tax rate ending for the year ending 2023, is this a tax increase on the residents of Maryville?
It is not.
I want to know, let me finish. I want to know where this tax rate, who is going to be impacted by it, because I am not for Maryville residents paying one more penny. I just want to know. So is this, let me finish. Does this raise taxes on our citizens, our residents here?
So I cannot answer that with a yes or no because I need to explain. The budget that I expect council will ultimately come to pass will not be a tax increase. What I mean by that is that I don't expect, again, based on council coming to a balanced budget, I don't expect them to be quote raising taxes. But it's really important to understand that because the assessed values have increased on everyone's property, when you take that amount and multiply it by the same rate, then the dollars and the pennies that they pay will be higher. But it's not because you've raised a tax rate. It's not because you've raised taxes. It's because the AVs have gone up.
Okay, Trista, here's a question I have for you. Because people are saying that they're reading their tax bills, and I talked to Pat about this six or seven months ago, and I still haven't got an answer from Pat. I like you, Pat, but I still haven't got that answer. So what I want to know is that just because you can increase assessed valuation, because the same screwed up garage, it couldn't be more than it was last year. It couldn't be. So if people are getting assessed evaluations as another way to raise taxes on homeowners, then that's something that I can't work with. Sorry.
But none of you control that.
We don't control that. The assessor controls that. We have nothing to do with that.
But we do know who the assessor is.
Well, there's an assessment process that they go through.
And here's what's going on with the assessor right now. We're paying dollars back because of over assessments. So when we talk about assessed valuations, then I think people should look at that as well. I don't want people...
We're not paying anything back. We're not part of that.
Oh, yeah, we're paying something back.
No, we're not.
Not for the mall?
No, we're not.
I'm not talking about for the mall. I'm talking about for the Maryville side. We are paying something back for that, right?
I'm not sure what's...
Like Kmart, over here, Myers, we are paying that back, right?
Yes, we did.
Okay, that's all I'm saying, man. Done.
Paid the back taxes.
We're not now.
The dark store, the dark store ordinance passed on some locations. And yes, we paid Meyer 2.2 million out of the Maryville Road Tiff for seven years of back taxes over assessment. You're right.
Well, that was my statement, so I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Trista. So we'll open this up for public comment. Is there any public comment on our budget estimates for the tax year of 2023? We have a rate of 0.7460. You heard some of the estimates of the budget from Trista, our advisor. Is there any discussion? Any comments from the public? Hearing none. I entertain a motion to approve the ordinance 22-22 on first reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Pettit for approval of ordinance 22-22. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mr. Span?
I haven't made of my mind.
Can we pass you?
Yes.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yes.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Usalak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Abstain.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Mr. Span?
Abstain.
Five yes, two abstentions.
The motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 22-23. It's an ordinance of the town of Maryville, amending pay for employees of the town of Maryville for the calendar year 2022.
Motion to approve for discussion, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Hardaway to approve ordinance 22-23 on first reading.
I guess in general, and I don't know if this is to Sheila or Pat, is this a housekeeping, or to Kelly? Is this a housekeeping where we're paying the fire, we're paying the fire inspector out of the proper fund?
It was being paid out of the inaccurate fund.
And we're, this will correct it to pay him out of the correct fund?
Correct fund.
All right.
Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call, please.
Mr. Span?
I'm thinking.
Is that a pass?
Yeah.
Mr. Hardaway?
Yes.
Mr. Minchuck?
Yes.
Mrs. Usalak?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. White?
I'm thinking. Taking my medicine.
Mr. Bella?
And we need to hear a determination from Mr. White. Is it a pass or abstention, or?
Still thinking.
Didn't take a pass. We'll come back to you, sir.
Still thinking. Well, I don't want to take a pass.
Well, Mr. White, we need to vote.
Well, I understand that. That's why we're here.
Okay.
That was my answer, pass.
Is there confusion on the ordinance?
Not confusion.
Okay, so...
I was trying to make a decision on how I want to vote.
Let me, let me ask.
Madam Clerk Treasurer, can you explain what we're doing here and why we're doing it? Evidently, we've been paying this employee from the wrong line item for quite some time, and this is really going to fix it. We used the wrong number, I think.
I'm going to have our payroll clerk come in and speak to it. I can kind of clear it up. When our fire inspector that passed away, Mick passed, he was being paid out of a, he was being paid by the fire department out of 114. So when I asked which one should we be paying Mick out of when he became full-time, he was already been paying out of 114, so we just continued to pay him out of 114. That's, that's all I know because I, and it was an honest mistake. I can just say that. Because we was just, I just paid him out of that line item because that's the line item, Kelly, that I was paying, that, that they were paying Mick out of, because I didn't start to pay Mick until January of '22 when he became full-time. I was very, I was not aware that there was a separate line item set aside for him that 50, that the amount of money that he was getting paid was put into. So it's just as Councilman Pettit said, it's a housekeeping thing to move the money back and put it in the right order. And so Aurelia has to go back and, and Robin will have to go back and retroactively correct what has been done. But it was a mistake.
Well, thank you for the explanation, and I'd like to change my vote.
Okay, Mr. White?
Vote yes.
And back to Mr. Span?
Yes.
Seven yes votes.
I didn't vote.
I'm sorry. Mr. Bella?
I voted yes. I think it's seven votes, right?
Yep, that was seven.
Thank you. The motion carries. Moving on tonight to resolutions. We have a Resolution 22-61. It's a resolution of the town of Maryville approving a form of economic development agreement among the town of Maryville and the Town of Maryville Redevelopment Commission and Midwest Aerospace Casting LLC. I believe this is what Mr. Pettit was referencing earlier.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve Resolution 22-61.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit with a second by Mrs. Usalak for approval of Resolution 22-61. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to resolution 22-63. Resolution of the town of Maryville, transferring appropriation within the 2022 budget in the general fund. Again, a housekeeping item. It's going from the general fund inspectors. A decrease is $8,700. The increase is going into general part-time code enforcement. The amount is $8,700. The net effect is zero.
So move.
Motion by Mrs. Uzalak. Second by Mr. Pettit for approval of this transfer of funds. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to resolution 22-65. It's a resolution of the town of Maryville amending in part the internal controls of the ARP fund. This is in light of recommendations we received from our clerk treasurer, financial advisor, based on new information we gathered on how to handle the ARP fund.
The new information the clerk treasurer's office gathered.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And I'd like to thank the clerk treasurer and her staff for bringing this to our attention so that to make sure that we're doing everything the right way.
Thank you, Mr. Hardaway.
Instead of having to go back and correct it after we've expended all of the money.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Excuse me.
May I interrupt briefly?
Go ahead.
I wanted to bring to council's attention that the clerk treasurer's office did email me after the draft was given to council, and I think it's important to bring those to the table for you to discuss yet today before you vote. What you have before you includes the items that were discussed at the workshop, as well then, the suggestion from the clerk treasurer's office was to adjust paragraph number 10. Let me get that in front of me. As it stands now before you, the clerk's office is to verify the vendors that have already received payment under the ARP plan. And if it's found that a vendor has been included, excluded, excuse me, that the, I guess it's understood that the clerk treasurer's office would be the one to contact the vendor for an affidavit, for them to then explain that they did not know they were excluded under the federal program. The clerk treasurer's office has asked that, in fact, the department head be the one responsible to obtain that affidavit. Because this draft had already been circulated for the agenda, it was not put into writing for today, but presenting it to you here for the conversation. It certainly can be amended by handwriting today and retyped for tomorrow. That's not a problem, but.
Would you like for me to explain why? Department heads have relationships with their vendors. They know who the vendors are. Some vendors they've had for a long time, some vendors they have relationships with. It would be much simpler. We are going to go back and fix all that's been done incorrectly. Our office is going to have to do that. However, in terms of getting affidavits, if somebody's name does pop on the list, those department heads know those vendors, and it would be much simpler for each department head, once we notify them that they have someone that's been paid, that was not, that was on the barred list, for them to get the affidavit from them, and we will provide that, and they can then do it. That is the simplest way to do it.
Can we simply just put the first few words of item 10 is reading, "Town department heads and/or clerk's office shall verify the vendors," et cetera?
I don't think, no.
I don't have an opinion on that, as long as it's clear who's going to take care of it.
I think when it says, "Every attempt shall be made to obtain an affidavit from the vendor," it should be say, "By the department head who requested payment for the vendor."
I do believe it's important, though, that the affidavit is the same wording across the town's total, and I believe that the clerk treasurer was going to craft that document.
And then we will submit that to every department head, so they'll have that for now and in the future.
So after vendor, we'll just add a comma, and then "by the department head?"
Yes.
Regarding its, pardon me?
"By the department head requesting payment to the vendor."
This refers to vendors who have already received payment, so we're not, well, that wording doesn't make sense, then.
The department who already requested the payment, they already requested the payment, you see? So those people who requested the payment should obtain the affidavit.
Mr. Hardaway, does your second stand?
Yes.
Or your motion stand?
My motion, yes.
Mr. Pettit, does your second stand?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Kelly, you'll have you. You're going to fix this.
We'll fix it and retype it for you to sign.
Very good. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The motion carries. Moving on to resolution 22-66. This is for the Opus Development Company LLC. Mr. Pettit, do you want to give us a?
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. President.
Motion to approve with a second by Mr. Minchuck. Motion by Mr. Pettit to approve resolution 22-66.
Mr. President, this is a development that was previously approved by the council, by the redevelopment commission, with the Mizner Group as the developer at 89th and Mississippi. The Mizner Group, Opus came in and met with Sheila and the development team with a purchase of the property from the Mizner Group, and so that I, as the councilman, wanted to know who's in town doing business, and not just passing on the tax abatement, I asked the Opus group, Brett's here in the audience, to come back in front of us. They made the presentation to the Economic Development Committee with a favorable recommendation to the RDC. The RDC passed their resolution at the meeting prior to this. This will be, Brett, you want to approach the mic and give the rest of the council the details on your investment in the town of Maryville?
Sure. Thank you, Councilman Pettit. Thank you, Mr. President. So we are just applying for the tax abatement structure that was granted to Mizner Group, plans to develop a 290,000 square foot industrial, state-of-the-art, Class A industrial facility, designed for up to three tenants. So ideas would be light manufacturing, light assembly tenants, and total project cost is around 30 million. We intend to break ground in April, May of next year, with maybe some light tree clearing in the fall, wintertime this year, and really only lease two Class A tenants, so similar image building to Crow's, Ameriplex stuff and down Mississippi. So I'm the director of real estate development with Opus Group. So we're based in Rosemont. We have nine offices across the country. I do industrial development solely. We have multifamily retail and our full-service development. So that's kind of a general overview of Opus Group and the project.
And so the rest of the council knows this project is literally in my backyard. The Nipsco High Line separate my subdivision, the Preserve. We happen to be zoned residential, the property to the south and across the street and everything around Mississippi is zoned M1, light industrial, so they are permitted use in that area. Brett has given me assurances, talking with Sheila and Steve, and we'll probably have to get with Matt of Birmingham, a large berm, 10 to 12-foot-high arborvitae lining that Nipsco easement. I do want to get that Nipsco easement cut, Brett, but this will be another investment in the town of Maryville. Again, as we said earlier in Angie's report, people are knocking on our doors, and I wish you guys well.
Yeah, thank you.
And then, Mr. Pettit, this is under our new revised abatement percentage, where that even as the second year, we start to get-
It's revised, Mr. President, but it's actually, Pat and Angie, it's following the state statute is really what it follows, as opposed to our, some of our innovative ones we've done in the past.
Any other discussions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Welcome to town. Moving on tonight, item 10, the American Rescue Plan, the AP voucher register summary for ARP purchases for September 27, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. President. The cost payable voucher for this evening for American Rescue Plan money is $99,758.93. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, with a second by Mr. Pettit. I will want to point out, though, I believe the second item there, Mr. Hardaway, for L. Warren Oil Company, it looks like we're paying that out of the wrong description. It says hardware and software. I believe that needs to be contractual.
It should be what?
Contractual. Isn't that right, Trista, we talked about?
I would suggest that, yes.
Yeah.
It fits better.
So if you wouldn't mind making that notation, and then, Mr. Pettit, if your second stands-
Yes.
-we can move forward.
Yes. We'll deduct that part, that 145476.
Madam Clerk, Treasurer, that's vendor 79, second item down.
I see it. You want to deduct it, or do you want it to just be paid out of the correct fund?
No, just paid out of the-
But this, was this one paid already? I'm asking my staff. I don't believe we paid them yet. Okay, so it can just be paid out of the correct fund? So do you still want to deduct it or leave it?
We're not deducting it. We're just correcting the-
He said to take them as they are.
No, it's not a deduction, Mr. Hardaway. It's just changing the classification of work.
Put it in the right category.
Right.
Right, not a problem.
Is that good? Mr. Pettit, do you understand that?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yep.
It's just, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure you understand.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any BZA or large gathering actions tonight, Sheila?
No, Mr. President.
Any old business before us tonight, council?
Mr. President, I have one item, and I see a couple residents in the front row from my area, and this has to do, two weeks ago, we had the situation with the utility drainage easement in the Sandpiper subdivision. I've spoken with Matt and Joe. Joe has been in contact with the owner who lives in Mississippi. She is willing to sell it back to us for the amount of money that she paid on tax sale. Joe, I believe you estimated it to be around $2,200.
I think $2,500 is-
$2,500. So at this time, Mr. President, I'd like to instruct both Joe and Pat Riordan to execute and find the resources to allocate, to get this drainage easement, and turn it over to Mr. Lake and the Stormwater Utility out there in the Sandpiper subdivision that would be owned by the town of Maryville.
Is that your motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
You have some long motions sometimes, Mr.-
I'm sorry, but Joe educated me.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you.
Any other old business before us? New business tonight? I do want to have an appointment for the special projects committee. Mr. White asked to be removed from that committee. At this time-
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Asked to be removed from the diversity committee.
That is that right committee?
So the whole committee is special, is the whole thing, so if-
It's food and beverage tax, it's the Fourth of July Parade, it's Juneteenth, it's a variety of things, and it's listed actually on the agenda, if you want to see it.
Yeah, I've seen that part, but I was wondering about the terms of, you have certain categories, and I know that-
Well, that committee takes care of all those categories, just as it has from it started.
Oh, okay.
Do you still want to be removed?
Absolutely.
And then, so you're removed, sir, and I'll appoint Jeff Minchuck to fill in the void.
Thank you.
Any other new business for us? Moving on to public comment.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Are we still a new business?
Sure.
Okay. Excuse me. I have some issues with the precinct organization here in Maryville. Last year, we did some things with the precinct organization. I know you say, well, what does it got to do with us?
I'm not sure if that's appropriate for a council meeting, Mr. White.
Well, it's inappropriate. You got the attorney right there.
Is Mr. Svetnov?
Because you're telling me I can't speak what I want to speak here, so.
Not really. We're talking politics, so we don't talk politics.
We're all politicians.
It's not, it's not part of the town. It's a separate entity in itself. So if the chair would want to entertain it, he can choose to do so or not choose to do so.
I'll give you some leeway, Mr. White. Let's see where you're going.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wanting to say, because I see some of the same things happening this year as I seen it happen last year, where I think that, where I think that what we, you know, some of the votes that we did last year, I know they was inappropriate, but you know what I'll do, Mr. President? I'll wait till we get it to a workshop, and then I'll say that, because it's some serious situations, and I think that when we're dealing with politics, because I'm not only a-
You're still talking about the precinct organization?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not only a precinct commitment, but I'm also, I'm not only a councilman, but I'm also a precinct commitment, and I think that people that put their thumb on the scale for people to win positions is absolutely inappropriate. So I just want to let you know, sir, that I'm going to contest things, because there's a lot of notice going on that I'm not seeing tonight, but what I will do is that when we have our workshop, then I'll bring that up, so you can clearly understand what I'm saying.
Maybe you and I should talk prior, because I don't know if that's an appropriate topic for our town council working.
Anything's appropriate, unless it's legal. If it's not illegal, everything's appropriate. Thank you.
Open to the public. So any public comments tonight? Yes, sir. Please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, and thank you.
My name is Warren Winter. I live at 5,500 East 97th Avenue. I have about three items I would like to bring up. First, about a year ago, 109th was closed. We got traffic from wherever, and they drive 40, 50, 60 miles an hour down the highway. I called the Maryville Police, asked them for help. They actually, after five or six calls, they did send an officer out. I volunteered my driveway for them to park in so they could, and they wrote about a dozen tickets, and I haven't seen them in six months. Now, since you've put a nice smooth highway in, they really boogie down the road now, so I'm looking for some help, some way to slow the traffic. We have lined driveways to come in over the hill.
Mr. Winter, you just made my decision for me. Steve, put the other meter on 97th Avenue by the old Kirk, and Warren knows where I'm talking about. Let's put it at Randy Minus's house, okay?
Absolutely.
All right, there's your second location, Steve.
Very good. The other thing was, I understand that you're considering a hunting ban in the town of Maryville. I own about 90-plus acres there. I use it for recreation and some farming. That's one of the reasons I live there, and I want to continue this process. Now, I understand you already have ordinances, and what we do is we duck hunt, we geese hunt. We're well within the limits of what you do presently, and if you are considering that, I'd like to know when you're going to discuss it, so I can be part of that.
I can do that, Warren. The one concern that I have, and this probably affects my area more than the other six wards, is right now, the ordinance, I believe, Kosa and Joe says 10 acres. And we've had some people that have given permission on the west side of I-65, and I had residents from Broadfield pack this room. I had residents from Broadfield pack this room, they were concerned about hunting that close to the Broadfield townhomes, because he had more than 10 acres, and he would let his friends hunt. Out in the Panhandle, as these guys have heard me say, it's a different world out in the Panhandle. I know, you know, you've got property, Dean Davis has got property south of you, you get into the Pat Sullivan Farm, there's a lot of areas out in the Panhandle that are different that we need to take a look at. I don't know where that's going to fall, it will fall under my committee, council affairs. We write the ordinances in the council affairs committee, I will definitely let you know.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
Good evening, town council. William Paul Mulligan, live in the Preserve subdivision. My interest this evening is to bring your attention to a company called Waste Management. I don't have a complaint about their service and pickup. What I have a complaint about is their pricing. When we started off with Waste Management, it was to eliminate congestion, I was told, because when I moved to Maryville, you could pick your own garbage company from three or four different companies. This led to several garbage trucks being in neighborhoods at the same time, and I was told that this led to congestion, because they come between 5:00 and 6:30 a.m., which is when the school buses are picking up and people are going to commute to work. Okay, that made sense. And we were going to be charged a flat fee. Started off, I think, at $12, something like that. Waste Management started off in 1968, and by 2020, that company posted a profit of $29 billion. 29 billion. Their fees to the citizens of Maryville have tripled, and the dollar and 50 cent senior discount I get a month is just not covering it. We started off because of congestion. The pandemic has caused people to work from home, so we have, with the influx of new residents, we have people who are not aware that that apron and driveway attached to their house is where their car should be parked. So people are parking on the street, their children are parking on the street, they've grown up, and either they moved back home or they never left home. So we have cars everywhere, both sides of the street, even those that are, have posted signs that say, "No parking this side of the street." This is a problem. Problem was talked about, mailboxes being blocked a little earlier in this meeting. We have congestion again, which is why we went to Waste Management to start with. My suggestion is that the town council reexamine the idea of having competition, because as you businessmen well know, competition creates lower pricing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments this evening? Please step forward.
Good evening. My name is Ernestine Barnes. I've been here before from Maryville, residents of Maryville Lake Apartments. You guys had helped us tremendously before, when we was in the problem with the previously owners. We had ran through a lot of problems with them, with neglect and abuse with the seniors. You guys have really saved us, and we really appreciate that. Well, now I'm back with another problem. We did get new owners, they was great, they started off being great. Management was cleaning up a lot of the problems that was over there. Then they sold the property to a new owner. This owner came in, started doing a lot of rehabbing, I guess, and upkeeping on the unit. Our rent is about to be jumped from 1,000 to 1,700, and we're seniors. So they remodeling the units, and the people like, they bringing, they say that they bringing it to market rent, because we're the lowest in that area. They was explaining to us that the people who've been there like 10 years, 12 years, eight years, that they're not upgrading their units. We was asking why, you know, why you not upgrading those units? They say, "Well, you know, we're bringing the value up, and the people that's coming in, they're going to get the new units, not the ones that's been there all those years." Then they start giving a six-month, six-month, eight months, 10 months, 16-month lease, because they trying to bring everybody to the summer, to be able, that they, I guess they want everybody to move in the summer, if they're going to move. So this is causing a lot of problems with the seniors, because we really don't understand what they're trying to do, or how they're trying to do this, and the 1,575 is the standard market rent that for two-bedroom and two-bath, two-bedroom and two-bath. That's not including your amenities. You got $100 for your amenities, and then you got to pay for your utilities. So when you really get through calculating, it's going to be close to 700 a month. We don't know if anything can be done, but we're back to see what can we do that within reason with these seniors, because you got seniors that's packing up, getting ready to go, because they can't afford this rent, and then they're not going to even upgrade the people that's been there, which, that's not fair. You know, if you've been there for 10, 12 years, there's haven't been no upgrade, no wear and tear, I mean, that's wear and tear, you know? So I asked them, I said, "Well, if I have to move out my unit," you know, they, I have storm, they made you buy for your storm doors, you can't take that with you. They made you pay for your vertical blinds, you can't take those with you. So we don't know what's going on, and I'm just, you know, if you guys can help us get more clarity, understanding of what they're trying to do, maybe we got it wrong, I don't know, but we just need more clarity on what they're coming in to do. Thank you.
We'll set up a meeting with them, that's what we did last time, when we did get some great results, Sheila, as you recall, and I think we need to take a ride...
So they are under new ownership now, and I'll contact those owners and try to set up a meeting.
Is it VITA, or is it a different owner?
Yeah, that's them, VITA.
Yeah.
I'm not sure you're allowed to raise rent that much in one swoop. We'll find out.
Well, the people that's, like, the ones that's already there, they don't, they haven't given us clarity how they're going to upgrade our unit without shooting us up like that, but from our clarity that the market rate, if we get it, if we get our unit updated like that, it's going to shoot up. And then, by them trying to switch us to the summer months to move, if they do six months, they go up, and then when they give you another lease, they go up. So it's like, you know, we, that's just too much.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into it, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
You used to have an organization called the OPA. Before you raised the rent, you would have to go through them. It was a government organization. I don't know if it's still there, Mr. Bella, could probably check it out.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, hi.
Good evening. My name is Lutzbi. I live 7794 Wright Street in Foxmoor. The last time I was up here, I'd like to, this time Steve is here, and I'd like to thank him, as he completed the streets, as far as the blacktop goes, but now our neighbors are concerned about the speed limit like everybody else in the country, and we were talking about the speed humps, and I want to see if there are any progress on the speed humps.
We'll look into it. I mean, that's what we're considering now, a variety of traffic calming devices is what we're reviewing right now, to see what works and what we can do.
Yeah, and also the, when you come in there at night in our development, you don't know where the street is, unless there's lights put up or the white lines on the side of the street. Now the blacktop, it's all black, and it's hard to see coming in there, and especially when it's raining or whatever it is, it's going to be tough.
It's tough, yeah.
The speed, I mean, the speed limits got worse since the road is nice and smooth now. Matter of fact, I watched now the last couple days, the school buses going through the 40, 45 miles an hour, and it's a 20 miles an hour speed limit.
We will mention that to our school superintendent.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing no others.
Brian Messarch, 201, E-68th Place. First off, I think that at some point in time, I would like to suggest that people learn what Robert's rules are. That would be helpful for the meetings. When people abstain, that means it's a no vote, which means the majority would be three to one. That you don't need to be a lawyer to know that. In addition to that, there is town ordinance and Robert's rules that state if a counselor wants to speak, they need to ask for the president or the chair's permission. They don't get to just speak whenever they want, and some people are worse than others. I would like to address 73rd Avenue, when they were going to build a warehouse in our neighborhood, Trailmark Crow Holdings did a traffic study, and they found out that the average speed of traffic on 73rd Avenue is 50 miles an hour. The speed limit over there in Ward 6 is 35 miles an hour. We have two schools there, I lovingly refer to it, my neighborhood is High School Heights. We have Pierce, and we have the high school, that's a lot of children in that area. That is a place that deserves a little bit more police patrol and speed control signs, and speed hump signs for the safety of the kids, because kids are walking around our neighborhood all the time. I don't think that somebody should make a decision, "Oh, let's just put in our speed control device on 97th Avenue." Let's have a little bit more thought and consciousness about where are we doing things, where are we patrolling things? There are people who have been up here, in the past, residents, talking about Tenny Place, right over by Sauk, that they, they want traffic to slow down, because they called the raceway over there, and we see it over here by our schools as well. When do we start thinking about the children and the children's safety, walking to and fro, or children walk, trying to maybe get to the community center, going across Broadway, where traffic is ripping way more than the posted 35 miles an hour? We need to start thinking about the whole town altogether with the speed, and come up with some solutions that will help slow things down for everybody and everybody's safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yeah, bless you. Seeing none, announcements, we have a town council workshop scheduled for October 4th at 4:30. Plan commission meeting October 4th at 6:30, and our next town council meeting is October 11th at 6:30.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve.
I have the rest of my signed papers back.